Everything's good to go, Sam? All right, thank you so much. All right, welcome, everybody. We are a little bit late, 9:01 a.m. Thank you for your patience. It is Tuesday, June 22, 2021. This is the regular meeting for the County Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. We are going to start with a moment of silence, and I believe that Supervisor Pyska has a moment of silence.
So, the Baradis family, which Moke and I went to school with, and the grandparents are still in South County, lost their daughter to cancer Sunday morning.
Supervisor Pyska, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. Any extra items from Board of Supervisors or staff? And hearing none, let's go ahead and move forward. We have many items on our consent agenda. Is there any items that Board of Supervisors wish to pull? And let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Are there any items that the public wishes to pull from our consent agenda for further discussion? Looking both on the, in the board chambers and in the Zoom room. In the Zoom room, please dial *9 if you are calling via phone to raise your hand, or press the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand if you wish to provide input. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda, 5.1 through 5.33.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Randall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabaki.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we have about 40 seconds left until we can move forward to our 9:05 a.m. item. I'm going to look at Ms. Grant. I'm just going to introduce the item. This is for public input. This is for public expression on any items that are not on the agenda. It must be within our jurisdiction as well. And again, you will have three minutes, and I'm going to ask, since there's so many people from the same group, to not necessarily repeat exactly what was said before. You have every right to do so, but just looking to be succinct and efficient in our, in our meeting today, if that's possible. I believe there's more of you outside. At one point, if some of you wish to exit the room to make room for others to come in and make comment, let's go ahead and wait till I say so. That way, there's no disruption in between the comments. But I want to make sure everybody who does wish to speak has the opportunity to speak. So let's go ahead and get started. It is 9:05 now. Public input, please come to the microphone, and you have three minutes. And please give us your full name when you get to the microphone.
Good morning, Board. My name is Arnulfo de la Cruz, Executive Vice President of SEIU 2015. I appreciate your time. I'm here today because every day, roughly 1,800 home care providers in Lake County wake up every morning. Many of them you see here today. They care for seniors, they help bathe them, they help make sure they have food. Their there is emotional and physical and mental support. And this is your largest workforce in Lake County. And what do we know about this workforce? We know that this workforce lives in poverty. Lake County unfortunately has its distinction of being tied dead last as the largest county in Northern California that keeps home care workers paid at minimum wage. For seven years, we've been trying to address this issue, and nothing has been done. And I can tell you right now, if it was the governor who could decide wages and benefits for Lake County home care providers, we already would have done that. Here's the thing, is that by lifting a workforce, your largest workforce out of poverty, you do that at 16 cents on the dollar. And I'm sure your CFO has already communicated that to you, meaning the 16 cents that you put in, the federal government and the state of California will send 85 cents to Lake County. That's a dollar increase. Are Lake County home care providers going to go to France or Italy with a new dollar increase or $1.50 in their wages? Absolutely not. They're going to spend that money here, in local businesses, in local restaurants, in cafes. But most importantly, they're going to help to support their families. I have a mother. I no longer have a grandmother. This workforce is majority women. You see them here today. None of you I know would want that for your mother. None of you I know would want that for your daughter or your grandmother. These are women who are caring for children, people with disabilities. And who are they caring for? As County Boards of Supervisors, they're caring for your number-one constituency, seniors. I know in every supervisor district in the state of California, the number-one voters are seniors, right? And what happened when the fire came, when the blackouts came? Who often was first to respond? Home care providers. So we can't keep pushing them to the side. The time is now to take action. And as you deliberate over the next couple of days, and you talk about the future of this workforce, it's time to get our thumb off of them, allow them to flourish. They're caring for families, they're caring for people with disabilities, right? So you have the power to do that. Five years in negotiations, seven years without a wage increase is absolutely unacceptable. We call on your leadership, as your constituencies elected you to do, to take initiative and show these women, show this workforce that they're deserving of the same care that they provide. Because I started my comments, this is about dignity. Those they care for, and this is why home care exists, the people that they care for are able to live in their homes. If it wasn't for them, many people would have to go look for skilled care institutions.
And if you can make your final statement, your three minutes are up.
Allow these folks to have the same dignity that they give every day to those that they care for. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Please, let's go ahead and keep moving.
No worries.
My name is Amy Carson, and I'd like to thank the Board for allowing us to be here. I represent us, the home care workers, and my clients. As you know, the cost of living has gone up, and our wages have not gone up. There's definitely a price gap between Lake County and Sacramento. I'm from Sacramento, and I understand that when the products and gas comes up here, they have to take a truck. So actually, things are becoming more expensive in Lake County than they are other places. And with that said, we're asking for a new contract, entering into the $15 an hour. And after seeing a lot of people asking for this, if the caregivers can't afford childcare, which they have kids and, you know, can't care for their own family, how are we going to care for our clients? I'm taking my client out, and he can't afford things because things are becoming more and more expensive here. So sometimes we have to help them with money, and over time, if the wages aren't going to go up, then you're probably going to lose a workforce. Because the bottom line is, is people have to take care of themselves, they have to take care of their families, and, you know, you've got to take care of yourself before you take care of anybody else. And with the cost of living going up, it's making it near possible, impossible, to even have this job. I drive from Sacramento, I take care of my brother, my mother's up here, she's almost going to, I don't know how she's doing, but, and like I said, it costs more and more when we take the clients out, the gas prices are going up, we don't have money for gas prices. What are we supposed to do if we don't have the money to do the job? So I gracefully asked for a new contract. I believe that it's time. It's been quite a long time. I've been a CNA for like 22 years. So now that I care for my brother here in Lake County, I'm seeing this as a different need, and I enjoy it, and I'm hoping that we can head into a new contract and have the new minimum wage, $15 an hour. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, or?
No. In public comment, we don't go into discussions.
Expenses gone up and wages haven't. That's kind of what's happening, so, thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder that in public comment, we can't engage in discussion, as it has not been agendized to prepare the public or the Board of Supervisors to entertain a discussion.
Okay, excuse me, I'm not going to be as polite as she is, I'm sorry. My name is Antoinette Skiles, and I do, like I say anywhere else, you Board of Supervisors were voted in to take care of your counties. And to take care of the county means taking care of the people that live in it. This is a rural area, and I don't mean to mention about the fires, but yes, we were the first responders. You need to really care about the county you're representing as well. You know, because I'm seriously saying, you got voted in to make a difference. You either want to leave your seat making the difference, or you want to sit there and drag on the next 20 years and say, yeah, we never got to that item, we never did anything in that item, they didn't even hear me speak. This is the time. This is the time, and the time is now. Because I can probably guess that there might be one person under the age of 50 here. So we're not getting any younger, we're getting older. I'll be 60. And if home care doesn't do something now for my grandchildren to be able to take care of my children or so forth, thank God, there's fifth generation here. But I'm telling you, you need to make a difference. You were put in these seats to make a difference. Thank you.
So I know you guys are tired of hearing from me, so let's just give me my raise, and it'll go away. But in all seriousness, I just want you guys to understand something. I had a client, and we don't choose our clients, our clients choose us, okay? And if we go to work one day and the client says, "I don't want you to work for me anymore," you leave, and you go find another client. Well, recently, I was put in that position. One of my clients said, "Oh, I don't want you to hear anymore." I said, "Okay." I went out, found another client, because, believe me, in Lake County, our recipients are not all being covered. Right now, there's a shortage of providers. Even though we're the largest employer in Lake County, not all of our recipients that are qualified to have a provider have one right now. I'm taking care of four people. And why is that? Because the man who let me go has not been able to find another provider to come in and take care of him. Now, I could walk, close my back and say, you know, "You're not my responsibility, you let me go." But I can't in good conscience. The man doesn't have a way to go to the grocery store, he doesn't have a way to go get his dog food, he doesn't make, there's nobody to talk to, he's a total shut-in, okay? So I am on my, I am getting paid, but I'm not putting in. He gets 60 hours a month, I can't do his 60 hours. But I am making sure his trash gets out to the street during the week, and that his house at least is not overflowing in trash, and that the dog is taken care of, and the groceries are taken care of. But why should I have to do that? We should have enough providers in Lake County if we paid enough. I'm embarrassed when I go buy the sign at McDonald's that says they're getting $15 an hour to start. When I started this job in 1998, or was it '93? I'm 66, so I don't remember how long. It was '93 or '98, okay? We were getting 50 cents above minimum wage, and every time the wage went up, we got 50 cents more in Lake County. Somewhere along the line, somehow, that 50 cents got dropped away. And now, we haven't had a raise for seven years, not even 50 cents. Not that that would do me much good right now with the cost of gas. But we really need you Board of Supervisors to stand up and show us what we mean to you. Because, believe me, it could be your mother, or your brother, or your sister. Oh, that must be my three minutes is up.
If you can make your final statement.
It might be somebody you know personally that I'm going to have to take care of, but I've got to be able to afford to do it. I drive to the Oaks every day. I live in Clear Lake. That's not a lot of distance, but it is when you do it five days a week.
Let's make that last statement.
That was the last statement. I need money for gas. Give me a raise.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me. I'm not used to these. I thank you for listening to me. I have a...
Hold on one second, it sounds like, Sam, did you turn off the mic?
I did turn it down.
Okay, let's start over.
Good morning. We'll start again. How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. I have a comment to make, and I hope you sincerely listen to what I have to say. This is my daughter and my caretaker. If it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be alive today. I had open-heart surgery when I lived in Sacramento, and she was the only one that was there for me. And please, these people deserve a living wage, something that they can go to the store and get what they want, not what that, oh, can I afford it? Please, just listen to what I'm saying. There's so many people like me and others that are like that, that need the help, but they need to take care of their families, too. So please, just think about it, seriously. And thank you very much for listening to me. I'm done now.
Can I ask you one last question, or my first question? I need, we need your name for the public record, is it possible?
Barbara Nichols.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and have a pleasant day.
I'm Sherri Williams, and I don't know if you're aware of it, but this count, the whole state of California has been audited by our auditor in Sacramento. Your data from the counties are unreliable, it's garbage in, garbage out. You really need to check that data, because I'm going to tell you something, they have found there's a lot of discrepancies in it, a lot. And I'm telling you, to live in this county at a livable wage is $23.84 in 2020. We're in 2021. 50 cents is nothing. 50 cents is when I used to babysit back in the 70s. Come on. I'm 61 years old. My poor mother, blood sugar dropped at 43. They sent her home from the hospital. Just because she lives in poverty, we don't care? I watched a movie last night where a little boy almost died because they didn't want to give him open-heart surgery. It's really, really sad. We take care of all nationalities. We're a huge union, and all we want to do is unite and make sure that people are taken care of with dignity in their homes. Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Vivian Denniston, and I am the Regional VP for Lake County and a proud member of my union, SEIU 2015. I've been a caregiver for 18 years. That entire time was for my own child, who's an adult. So she did not ask to be born with a disability, so she needs care, constant care, she's never left alone. And what's hard for me is that this is the fastest-growing industry in California, home care providers. And the fact that we make so little scares me, because I'm 66 years old, and someday a stranger is going to take care of my child. I really want that person to be respected, to make a living wage, and want to take care of my child. And I know that's what we're all about, home care workers. We're not, you know, we're not expecting to get rich or have some extravagant life, but we do deserve a living wage. We deserve to be respected by our employer of record. And really, 16 cents? Come on. I mean, that's like, that's like nothing. Where else are you ever going to have the ability to make a contract that costs you 16 cents on the dollar? You're not. So please, we need to think about the future, make this the best program that we can so that people like my child, when I'm gone, I don't have to worry about somebody taking care of her that doesn't make even 50 cents over minimum wage. Please.
Thank you.
And just to throw it on the record, I'm not responsible for what's happening right now.
We know either.
Honest. I'm surprised that you guys are...
Let's only speak if we're up in the microphone.
My name is Shri Ederback, and I am a caregiver and a homeowner. I am 28 years old, fighting to keep a home and protect my people. Right out there, we care, we need this contract in Lake County, anywhere in California, to help you guys, help your family. Little story, when I started, I was only 15 years old. My grandma died from four-stage lung cancer on 9/11/09, and she told me to protect what I believe in. These lovely ladies out here, the people out here, support. Please, help us. We don't want to keep coming back. We're just tired of being mistreated. Respect us, protect us, and pay us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments? So let's go ahead, since I don't see anybody in here. Carolyn, if it's possible to let anybody in the room, it looks like some people have already taken their seats or offered their seats. And let's wait before public comment to just move everybody in, that way we don't have a bunch of activities happening simultaneously. And that seems to be it from the lobby area. Okay, let's go ahead.
Hi, thank you for having me today and listening to us. My name is Kendra Kramer, and for more than 20 years, I have been justifying the existence and worthiness of my child, myself, and those that care and first support us, while under government scrutiny and judgment every single month. This will not end until death. My children are 3, 4, 16, and 20 years old. A monetary value cannot be put on the changes to people, programs, policies, and service, access to care, removal of barriers, open doors for others, work with nonprofit and government-based organizations, and countless community-based resources and support that we have brought to Lake County. Because of our existence, this is home to me and my family, and we care. People should be able to thrive at their homes, in their hometowns, and in rural communities, regardless of vulnerabilities. IHSS is a division of Medical, which is operated by California Department of Healthcare Services, DHCS. This is healthcare that we are talking about today. That means providers and clients are protected and obligated by federal and state privacy policies such as Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, HIPAA. However, I do have some information to share with the public. California's Medical budget is $22.5 billion from the general fund, $118 billion overall. However, I want to be clear that we are talking about pennies on the dollar here today in cost to the county in exchange for invaluable resources and revenues added to our wonderful Lake County communities. The Board of Supervisors cannot support health and wellness in any aspect for any entity, cause, function, board, or committee without supporting IHSS and everyone involved in it. IHSS is an essential part of the operations of a county-organized health system like Lake County operates on in order to receive their funding from the state and federal government. The people of Lake County elected the Board of Supervisors to be community-minded for all people living in Lake County. If the Board of Supervisors has issues with the IHSS program, how it is funded, how they run essential operations, who uses the program, and who is employed by the program, they need to take it up with DHCS and their state and federal governments, not take it out on the struggling, traumatized, vulnerable community members and residents of Lake County that are just trying to survive in their homes. Am I on time? Am I okay?
Someone else is keeping time, I don't know.
20 seconds.
20 seconds.
Okay. What is a community needs health, community health needs assessment? A community health needs assessment is a systematic process involving the community to identify and analyze community health needs. The process provides a way for making it communities to prioritize health needs and to plan and act upon unmet community health needs. Do you want me to continue?
It looks like you have a relay going on, and you're going to pass the baton?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and keep going then.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm Leticia Sanchez, and I'm going to just read some of Kendra Kramer's statement. She's one of the constituents here in Lake County. Lake County has 64,562 residents with 29,267, or 45% of these residents receiving Medical benefits through PHC Partnerships Health Plan of California. It's the organization responsible for managing Medical through the county-organized health system of the PHC member population in this county. 20% are ages 0 to 10, 16% are ages 11 to 19, 30% are ages 20 to 44, and 22 are ages 54 to 64, and 10% are age 65 and over. 88% of the PHC members primarily speak English, while 12% are speaking Spanish. The ethnicity of the population includes 62% white, 24 Hispanic, 3% Native American, 2% African American, and 8% others. Many seniors and disabled adults have PHC as a secondary insurance, and those people were not counted in this survey. I will argue that that makes the vulnerable populations of the people, over 50% of the entire population of Lake County. What is the vulnerable population? Vulnerable populations are groups and communities at a higher risk for poor health because of their barriers that they experience to social, economic, political, and environmental resources, as well as limitations due to illness or disabilities. The vulnerability of these populations can be measured based on racial and ethnic minorities. The uninsured, low-income children, the elderly, the homeless, those with human immune deficiency viruses, HIV, and those with the other chronic health conditions include several mental illnesses. Vulnerable populations of people face a multitude of stigmas, judgments, and criticisms from everyone, society, friends, and family members, government workers, programs, and resources, most of which are supposed to only be there for love, support, and help. Vulnerable people are more likely to experience abuse across the life continuum, and often starting in childhood. Poverty is one of the contributing factors that make a child vulnerable. Most children living in Lake County are living in poverty or below standards. Severe housing problems are characterized as overcrowding, high housing costs, and lack of kitchen or plumbing facilities. 26% of Lake County's populations are facing severe housing problems, adding to the numbers of vulnerable people living in Lake County. Fire floods, PSS events, and now COVID have not left one resident of Lake County unaffected. We are all traumatized and have experienced more as an entire county than most people face in their lifetimes. We are Lake County strong. We are defining emergency preparedness, defensible space, disaster response, shelter-in-place, essential workers, and community minded years before COVID. COVID brought to light the lives of IHSS workers and the lives of those that live sheltered in place at home from the rest of the world. The Board of Supervisors needs to stop making vulnerable people beg for dignity, respect, and acknowledgement, support, time, or monies. There will never be any equity among vulnerable peoples, the majority in the Lake County communities we love in our homes and with the rest of society, as long as the Board of Supervisors continue to single out and exclude the IHSS program. Residents of Lake County need to know that their elected officials have everyone's best interest in mind, especially now after more than a year sheltered in place from the outside world with no resources or relief. We have kept our most vulnerable clients healthy and safe during the COVID pandemic, often at the expense of ourselves or caregivers. County programs, resources, services, community-based organizations, and the rest of the residents of Lake County need to know you understand the healthcare system and the functions of each entity involved. They need to know you support health and wellness of the communities. You've been elected to serve as a whole operation, not just vanity.
And your three minutes are up. If you... If you can maybe get to the last.
My name's Calvin. I'm going to be finishing up the statement of Kendra Kramer. They need to know you support health and wellness of the communities you've been elected to serve as a whole, not just in vanity. Removing homeless off the streets to appear to be supporting people and their health while failing to help and support working people make happier, healthier homes is incredibly vain. Failing to provide a good contract for IHSS workers, knowing that there are families dependent upon this income is counterproductive to all of the adverse childhood experiences work that you do. The poverty and education that Dr. Donna Beagle has brought to Lake County and is a slap in the face to every entity and person involved in health and wellness in Lake County. Prove that you haven't been wasting the healthcare system's time and money, that you support Lake County residents no matter what their status is, that you value Lake County workers, and that you are community-minded and Lake County strong. And I'm going to add a little bit of my own onto that.
Please.
So, we haven't had a contract in five years. However, when COVID hit, y'all were very quick to classify IHSS workers as essential workers and asked them to risk their lives to help keep the disabled and the elderly out of their homes, to save their lives, out of the, out of facilities, sorry, save their lives, because COVID was running rampant in those facilities, right? And it saved you money in the process, because those facilities don't come cheap. But when our care workers come and ask you for a wage, just let them keep their heads above water. That's when the excuses come out. Five years' worth of excuses. It's time for that to end. Give them the ways they need. It's real simple. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Any further public comments?
Hi, I'm an IHSS worker, and I believe that we should get treated fairly because, like he said, we're on the, basically, the front line for our clients. And at some point, everybody's going to need a home healthcare worker at any time in their life. And it's not right for us to be begging to just survive when we have to help our families, our clients, and stuff like that. We shouldn't be begging for money, because at some point in life, everybody is going to need a home healthcare worker, whether it's after surgery, or whether they get sick, or, you know. Everybody's going to need a home healthcare worker at some point. And if we don't get treated fairly, then, you know, we should be able to get treated fairly just because we're not considered a high-paying job. You know, a lot of the times, we are the only people that can get to them when they need help or something like that, and we have to stay with them until an ambulance gets there, until they get to a hospital. And a lot of the times, we have to help them with things that they can't help themselves. Why should they have to lay there in bed and not move? You know, a lot of the time, we're their only companions, too, like, you know what I mean? They thrive in their home better than they would in, you know, than in a hospital, you know what I mean? So, yeah, I think we should get treated fairly. It's not, you know, just because we're not working in hospitals and get a high-paying job, we should at least get minimum wage. It's pretty sad that fast food gets paid more than we do when we're trying to help people survive in life. So, I think we should get treated fairly and recognized as an actual job, when people don't think that we're an actual job. So, I think people should recognize that we are actually trying to help people and deserve better than what we're getting treated right now. So, like I said, everybody's going to need home healthcare one way or another, whether they're older or it comes from surgery or something like that. So, think about it, we should get a better pay, at least minimum wage. It's pretty sad that fast food gets paid more than we do. So, everybody's going to need it at some point in their life. Just think about that.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Carolyn, is there anyone else in the lobby that wishes to speak? Okay. Thank you for all the comments. We do have one more, and I have to go to the Zoom room as well.
But you'll be able to hear me.
We need you to speak in the microphone, so everybody on, that's listening on television or livestream can hear you through the feed.
I'm new at IHSS, and I'd like to ask, which one of you, as a supervisor, sits on the governing board for IHSS? Isn't there a supervisor that sits on it? Meets with them?
There are appointments, but no supervisor is on the governing board.
Wow.
Mr. Chair, you are on the board of directors of the Public Authority.
That's pretty embarrassing. I've never been invited. I've been to a meeting before with the person that I've appointed before. Robert is my appointee. Robert Taylor, I believe, is his last name. But I've never had an invitation to the governing board.
Oh. You might get one.
This board convenes as the governing board as necessary to consider IHSS items.
Okay, Robert Taylor. And, um, let's see, what was I thinking?
And can you please provide your name, please?
My name is Frances, Frances Ford. And I came with something, a letter that comes from IHSS that kind of disturbed me, because it kind of makes it, make me feel like I was kind of not worthy of speech that would, I'm nervous, that is worthy of just consideration. And it came from their office, and I don't know who to address. Maybe the omspinsman, but maybe you guys can tell me who I would go to to address this issue, other than maybe who it came from. Because I don't think issues always get done by who breaks, breaks the thinking, you know? You have to have new thinking. So, I also am an IHSS person, but I've been a person who'd like to see people age in place, age in their homes, dignitively, you know, with dignity. I am nervous. And we, we all know you need more money sometimes. But it's not just money, it's benefits that come along with the money. You know that you can go on vacation and feel great with $80,000 coming in a month, or, I mean, a year. But people who get $14 an hour, what are we making? $20,000 a year, $30,000 a year? They don't even get vacations, half of them. So, how do we, how do we rethink it so that we want to give more money? It's like giving more land to people, having more, more homes for people. So, there's a place for this in our budget. If it comes from HUD made, HUD has money for people to age in place. Maybe we just need to help contract from them. I don't know. But there, there has, I think there's a willingness in your heart, but is there a, is there a way to make that heart moving to the financial part of it? So, I'm done, thank you, I don't need three minutes. Bye.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I decided I would speak. I'm Chloe Carl. At one time, I was the head of the IHS Advisory Committee for four years. And when I heard the talk about who's representing the Board of Supervisors, that we had Ed Robey, we had Denise Rushing, I forget who else, but we had several people that made an effort to get to the meetings each month, and it was appreciated. I want to say that when I was there, we did our best to provide training. And from what I'm hearing, there isn't adequate training for people. There's, there's a lot of need for, there's fall prevention, there's how do you transfer safely? And some of these workers are, they're so needed, and they come on, and they have very inadequate, you know, training. You can't just watch a video and learn how to do these things. So, we would bring in people to do that. And I don't remember whether they were, you know, volunteers. I'm a medical professional, so I know about training as an occupational therapist. And the essential work that's being provided is, I just want to understand the respectfulness of the people who are in this field, in this field of work, because I just see it today with the sensitivity of everybody out there. So, I want you to consider that, and consider that the money that they're, any increase in wages, they're going to spend it back in the community. This is what happens, it's been shown, especially we have pretty much mostly female providers. So, those are just some considerations I wanted to add to some of the things that have been heard. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Any further public comments? And nobody left in the lobby? Oh, nobody left to make a public comment, that is. All right, thank you all for your comments. They have definitely been heard. And we are going to move on to our 9:06 presentation. And I don't see anybody here in the board chambers for that presentation.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we had a hand raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you so much for bringing me back to the attention of the Zoom room. I did see phone 6205, and I completely forgot, so I apologize for that. Let's go ahead and unmute that phone. Please give us your name, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much, and thank you for including me. This is Bart Levinson. I am here to comment on something similar, but a little bit in addition to. And I'd like to start by saying again what one of your earlier speakers said to you already. She said, "You need to care about the people. This is the time. We are the people, you are the people. You need to make a difference. You were put in these seats to make a difference." That's the end of the quote from her. In the Record B today, there is an article, and it addresses the lack of information coming from the county, OES, and PG&E concerning customer care centers, cooling centers, and other preparedness options. And I'd like to read from some of that article. Wildfire season is already in progress amid record-high temperatures. We still wonder why the County of Lake has offered little relief during these ongoing heatwaves to its most vulnerable residents for at least two years running. Among them, the seniors who have endured over a year of COVID-related closures due to the facilities normally, to the facilities normally opened them, sorry, I'm nervous, the county-wide senior centers. Surely, if the County of Lake is able to materialize funding whenever the need is dire, such as in the case of defending employees from multiple lawsuits, or whenever a no-bid contract is in order for all sorts of other emergencies, then a plan could be made to provide relief to the most vulnerable segment of our population. It seems as though the COVID risk is minimal, because for one part, a large part of the senior population has already been fully vaccinated, with nearly half of the county residents already fully inoculated. And for another, quite possibly, as a result of the ramp-up vaccination efforts, cases in the county are at a low tally of 19 overall cases, with no new cases reported in the last week. District 1 Supervisor Moke Simon demonstrated two years ago how quickly a facility could be set up to address the dangers of extreme weather when the Middletown Senior Center was used to serve as an overnight warming center in the winter of 2019, for example. It should not take the threat of a PG&E power shut-off event for more cooling centers, charging centers to be established countywide.
And your three minutes, your three minutes are up. If you can go ahead and make a final statement?
Yes. I'm asking that you, the supervisors, work with the Office of Emergency Services. The PG&E requires that the Office of Emergency Services request these charging centers, cooling centers, and the Office of Emergency Services has not. Please bring back the PSPS Committee. We need you, the supervisors, to be caring for all the people.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and unmute Will Tuttle.
Thank you, you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. And, yeah, I'd like to basically protest against the state of emergency that has been in place now and has continued to be in place here in Lake County because of COVID-19. I think it's very unwise to have a state of emergency. It's a tremendous amount of evidence that it's based on fraudulent data on a PCR test that is well-known and has been said by very high-ranking and respected health authorities like John Ioannidis at Stanford University and many others, that this PCR test, which tells, which is the gold standard for having COVID, is completely non-functional. It's easily manipulated. The inventor of the test, Carey Mullis, who has now passed away, but he, he said it can never be used to diagnose anything. And so, what we're seeing happening is a tremendous amount of fear continues. The vaccination program is killing more people than ever and causing a lot of suffering for young people. There's more people dying, over 6,000 people that have died from this now nationwide. And this number is well-recognized to be a gross underestimate. So, I'd like to emphasize the importance of love as a healing power, and which is really the opposite of fear. When we close down businesses, we force people into fear, we're causing a lot more suffering. And I'm hoping that you will be proactive in the response to this, especially now, and do education to help people eat better. And one of the things that I've been doing for many years is traveling all over the United States. I've spoken in all 50 states and over 50 countries all over Asia, Europe, North and South America, Africa, the Middle East, Australia, New Zealand. People are very hungry to hear. My, my book has been translated into 16 languages by volunteers. It's just about the keys of health, and the health really requires healthy nutrition. The bodies are trying, people's bodies are trying to clean out toxins. And adding more toxins in air, and food, and water, and then toxic medications that are being forced on people by Big Pharma, which has taken over the media, as well as governmental agencies, it's just a recipe for disaster. What you're seeing today is just part of that. But these profits are being stifened, straight into a tiny wealthy elite. There's more billionaires than ever from these pharmaceutical companies making so much money on these. And people are suffering, and there's been good things that have been suppressed. It's well-known that ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, budesonol, as well as vitamin C, vitamin D.
Your three minutes are up, if you can please give us your final statement.
Very effective, it's only been, okay, I'll wrap it up. It's only been states like California, New York, Michigan, and a few others, and a few European countries where have had this disaster. The rest of the world has had no, there's no increase in deaths. So, really, please, do an investigation and educate, and use love rather than fear. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And that does it for Hands Up in the Zoom Room. And again, nobody left here in the boardroom with public comments, so we shall move on to our 9:06 AM item. I do not see anyone in the boardroom, or I believe in the, let me actually see in the attendees, I didn't look at that. So, I am just going to read it from the dais. And this is a presentation brought to you by myself and Supervisor Simon with a proclamation commending Dave Deakins for his 33 years of service to the residents of Lake County. So, let me begin. Whereas, the public service of certain individuals should be highlighted in our community in order to recognize their contribution and their impact to making Lake County a better place to live today than it was before. And whereas, Dave Deakins is such an individual who has dedicated 33, 33 years of his life to serving the people of Lake County, and more specifically, the areas of Clear Lake and Lower Lake. And whereas, Dave Deakins has lived in Lake County his entire life, including graduating from Lower Lake High School, and continued to support for Lower Lake High School sports as a founding charter member of Lower Lake High School Football Fundraising Association, LLHS FFA. I hear there's a way to pronounce that, but I was probably going to mess it up. And this group provides critical funding to ensure the opportunity for our And this group provides critical funding to ensure the opportunity for our youth to take part in competitive sports continues since inception and into the future. And whereas, Dave Deakins continued his support of our youth by assisting in coaching football for the Lower Lake High School Trojans, including coaching his sons, who also played on the team. And whereas, Dave Deakins was hired as a permanent full-time employee in 1996 as a firefighter for what was then Lake Shore Fire District, prior to consolidating to Lake County Fire Protection District. And whereas, Dave Deakins was promoted to apparatus engineer in 1999 and became fire captain in 2005, where he has played a crucial role of being in charge of all facilities while also performing routine and major projects. And whereas, Dave Deakins has been instrumental in assisting our new fire marshal, Corey Smith, as well as a tremendous mentor to numerous probationary firefighters. And whereas, the city of Clear Lake hired Dave Deakins in 2017 as a part-time building inspector, allowing for an amazing coordination between the city building department and the district to ensure open lines of communication in order to enhance the safety of all new development. And whereas, Dave Deakins will be retiring on July 1, 2021, to be with his family, embark on new adventures, and create new experiences and memories. And he will be greatly missed in his role at the Lake County Fire Protection District. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake recognizes the vast contributions of Dave Deakins and share their unconditional gratitude to the great and often heroic service that he has provided to his communities, and wish him and his family the best as they move on to new endeavors. Adopted this 22nd day of June, 2021. And I will add a statement that Dave has been involved in the many fires that we all know too well in our recent past. I did not want to speak of these in the proclamation because oftentimes those fires take away the spotlight of the individuals. There are so many people involved in fighting these fires. But he has been there throughout all of our tragedies, throughout all of our crises. And he has selflessly put himself on the front line for all of us. And I really appreciate Dave as a person and the service that he has provided to our county. Are there any other comments on this proclamation before we move on?
Yeah. Yeah, I would definitely, you know, appreciated the conversation from Chief Sepeda in making sure that we got this proclamation completed. So good job, Bruno. I know you did all the heavy lifting on this, so it was an honor to just be a part of it. So thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Any other comments? So let's go ahead and just real quick, any public comment on this before we move on to our next presentation? Seeing none in the Zoom room. And I believe that they were very busy yesterday. So this is most likely the reason that they are not available here for the meeting. We can't always time it perfectly. Fires occur unfortunately when fires want to occur. So let's go ahead and bring it back. I see no public comment. Item 6.3, 907 AM item. Presentation of proclamation commending Jeff Rine for his 30 years of service to the County of Lake. And I feel I really messed up your last name on that one. Okay.
Ryan.
Ryan, thank you very much.
Jeff Ryan. Sam, is this on? Okay, great. So Anita and I couldn't pass up the opportunity to present this to you, Jeff. Having worked with you most of the years that you've been here.
I'm gonna dance later.
So today, we're commending Jeff Ryan for his 30 years of service to the County of Lake. Whereas, Jeff Ryan began his career with the County of Lake on March 18, 1991, as an accounting tech in the sheriff's jail division. And whereas, on November 2, 1993, Jeff was promoted to administrative analyst in the county administrative office, where he successfully performed a wide variety of assignments, including assisting with the county's annual budget preparation, serving as a liaison to several county departments, and preparing staff reports and presentations for the Board of Supervisors and others. And whereas, on July 1, 1999, Jeff's position was reclassified and he was promoted to deputy county administrative officer and continued distinguishing himself for his capabilities relative to county financial matters, including assuming the lead role in refinancing of several assessment district bonds, which resulted in significant savings to the taxpayers and to the water and sewer ratepayers of Lake County. And he also assumed lead staff responsibility for administration of the Risk Management Division after reorganization of Risk Management into a division of the administrative office. And whereas, on January 2, 2013, Jeff transferred to the Public Services Department, where he served as deputy public services director, responsible for planning and direction of many of the department's mandates and special projects. Whereas, in 2015, after the devastating Valley Fire, Jeff stepped up as a disaster service worker to coordinate state, excuse me, coordinate local, state, and federal representatives to manage the extraordinary volume of donations the county had received on behalf of wildfire survivors. And whereas, also in 2015, Jeff returned to the administrative office, where he was later promoted to chief deputy county administrative officer, again having an instrumental role in budget and finance and in training, transition, and success of the leadership staff. And whereas, on September 1, 2018, Jeff transferred to the Office of the County Council as a risk manager, where he has shown an unerring ability to recognize, understand, and apply the principles of risk assessment to effectively balance the need to reduce potential liabilities while still advancing the goals of the county and moving projects forward. And whereas, Jeff has been a loyal steadfast employee, able to move effortlessly among various county departments, sharing his fiscal expertise and common sense approach to solving many issues facing county government. And whereas, throughout the course of his work, Jeff has established many meaningful professional relationships that have served the county well throughout the years, with county employees and representatives of state, local, and federal governments. And whereas, after more than 30 years of proud public service, Jeff will retire from the County of Lake at the close of fiscal year 2020-21. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that on behalf of the Lake County Board of Supervisors, Jeff Ryan is commended for his years of service to Lake County and wished the utmost happiness in his retirement. Adopted this 22nd day of June, 2021. And since I still have the microphone.
We just need one story, that's it.
That's right. Lawyers know nothing about three minutes, trust me. Jeff, I can't tell you how valued you've been in our department. You have a fiscal knowledge that's unparalleled in this county, and everyone knows that. You're also a very kind man and a problem solver. And no one likes to see an attorney cry, so I'm gonna stop now. But I can't tell you how much we will all miss you. Everyone's here. You're highly valued. And I hope you take that away with you when you retire, because no one I know deserves a happier retirement than you. Also, just so you know, we are having a little get-together on Friday morning. Jeff has a busy schedule as he's winding up. We'll be sending that notice out. And we're also going to do a Zoom meeting so people can record a message that will give Jeff a thumb drive and he can take away everybody's congratulatory thoughts. Thank you.
And no one could say that better than Anita, but the thing that I would like to add, Jeff, is you're also just a ton of fun to work with. So I've enjoyed working with you and laughing with you over the years and so grateful to you, to all you've done for the county and for me in particular. So thank you so much.
And if it's possible, I know that the entire department came today. I would like to see if maybe we can have a department shot? Since we have the camera out. And before you all sit down, usually I would start with the supervisors, but since pretty much the entire department showed up, I want to make sure and give the department an opportunity if you wish to say anything during this public session. The attorneys are all walking away.
Is this on? All right. Actually, I have to be in Department 1 in a few minutes, so good timing. I've known Jeff for quite a while, well over a decade. I mean, he's been here already since when I first started. And he's always been helpful, always made himself available. We've worked on several projects, the county from his time in admin, through public services, and now to our office. And that's the, one of the many things that's been consistent with Jeff is that he's always been professional. Well, I've always found, find him to be very friendly, respectful, always willing to help. You probably might not be aware of this, but you've helped me out a lot, especially when I first started, more than you know. When I first started out, when you were working in admin. So no one deserves a great, better retirement than you do, Jeff, for all your years of service here. That's something that I look up to. And so congratulations in your retirement. It's very well-deserved. Thank you, Jeff.
Any comments from supervisors before we open it up for the rest in the public? Jeff, I want to thank you. I don't know how much you are aware, how important you've been to us, at least this past year. Yes, the rest of the 30 years that you've been here has been important, but this past year, you helped us craft a piece of policy that helped protect all employees. And really greatly appreciate what you've done for us to make sure that we are safe with the unknowns happening around us. It hasn't been an easy pathway, things changing all the time, but really appreciate your help. I know you have found me a couple times, lost in the county council office, wandering where I should go. And it's been stated already, absolutely welcoming, absolutely helpful, and absolutely a very positive personality, which helps everyone all around you. So thank you so much for your service to Lake County and the best of luck in your next endeavors. If there's no further comment from Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I'd just like to say the same. Obviously, as coming on, as one of the new supervisors, you were always available, answered the questions. And obviously, you moved from the down here up to the top during that time. But Jeff, I was happy we were doing the stair job today because I got to walk to work with you this morning from my parking spot in Public Services. So thank you for your time here for the county and your dedication. But you are, as they have said, a kind person and dedicated to your job. So greatly appreciated here in Lake County. So thank you, Jeff.
Just want to wish you well on your retirement. I know you will definitely have been missed here on the county. I know one of our first conversations we had, I was still running for office and I was sitting in the audience and you came down and sat next to me and you said, "I think you're gonna win this. Are you ready?" So just, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Yes, Jeff, I'd like to say enjoy your retirement. And I do remember that they had the supervisors that were running as candidates had to come in and do like a budget review. And you stayed afterwards and talked with me, and that was really welcoming. I felt really good about that, so thank you.
Well, unfortunately, I didn't get to meet you.
It is the day.
With so many other people. But I do appreciate all of your years of service and wish you a very happy retirement.
Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anyone wish to make a statement before we close this item up? Seeing none, let me check the Zoom room. I do see it. Can't run fast enough.
I actually ran over, to be honest. I was on the phone, I almost missed it. So if I'm out of breath, it's not because I'm crying, it's because I was, I literally ran over from next door. Public services was mentioned here and earlier, I think, in the proclamation. There's so much that he has done for public services, whether it was in his time as a deputy director there or outside of that. It's a lot of it very unique, telecommunications facilities, landfill expansions. There's just, it just goes on and on. But I really am just tired, trust me. Not that I wouldn't cry for you, Jeff. So no, I am not crying. But Jeff, I would cry if you wouldn't come back. So I'm really hopeful that, you know, that this is not the end. He has a wealth of knowledge that if you don't know it, you're missing out. So Jeff, appreciate you, looking forward to the future.
Thank you.
So I don't have anything new to say about Jeff that everybody hasn't already said, has already been said, I was just gonna rephrase a little bit. As far as knowing stuff, a lot of people know a little bit about everything. I think Jeff knows a lot of bit about everything. And in a conversation I had with one of the best attorneys that I know, we were describing the characteristics that you look for in attorneys and generally in employees. And some people get promoted and get into positions because they're nice. And we talked about having somebody that's nice or effective. And given the choice, you always want effective over nice. Jeff brings both. He brings both of those. He's a nice person and he's effective. And I value the times that I get to interact with him and thank you and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. If there's no further public comment in the room, I have one in the Zoom room. If we can unmute Rob Howe, or if you're already able to unmute?
I'm able to unmute, but I'm not able to start my video, so I guess you don't get to see me, which is probably a good thing. So Jeff and I both started with the county, I guess, about 30 years ago in the jail. And I can tell you with all these positions that he's held, he's always been a tremendous help for me personally and for the department I worked in, or departments I worked in. Very much appreciated. When I took this job as the chief probation officer, come budget time, I didn't have a finance manager and I had never done one. And Jeff kind of came into my office, hung out for about two weeks, showed me and my staff how to do it, basically prepped our budget for us. And that's the kind of thing he always did. I worked closely with him as a risk manager and other positions he's had. And as Sheriff Martin just said, he's also in, Anita Grant as well. He's a great guy. And in addition to everything he's done for me professionally and the help he's given, I consider him a friend, I'm gonna miss him. And I'm with Lars, I hope he hangs around, at least comes back part-time. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much. Last call for public comments before we move on?
Well, ironically, I still don't know what I want to be when I grow up. But I do know that this journey, 30-plus years, has been very satisfying. And the credit for that goes, well, first of all, to my wife, who's been my anchor. I'd be living under a bridge if it wasn't for her. But it goes primarily to my coworkers, especially those special few who routinely went out of their way to encourage me and assist me as we together endeavored to serve the public. So if it was any words of advice I have for those who follow me is, go out of your way for one another. It will make all the difference. So thank you, everybody, for the incredible comments. It's very humbling and sort of surreal. Thank you especially to Anita and Carol. You're my dear friends and I love you guys. Okay, thanks.
And I think the surreal will be when Anita's dancing. I didn't say it was gonna be bad. All right, thank you so much. We are going to move on to our 6.4, 9:10 AM item. Consideration of Hiring Incentive Policy and Updated Employee Referral Program. And passing it on to our CAO, CAO Hutchinson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Our HR Director Pam Samick is gonna present this item. And so hopefully she'll get her audio and video on here in just a moment. While she's doing that, I just want to take a moment to thank the Class and Comp Recruitment and Retention Committee, which is largely responsible for the development of these drafts. Our hope is that we can have sort of a workshop session with you. And we'd like to be able to leave today's discussion. And we'd like to be able to leave today's discussion with concurrence as to what should go into these policies, so that we can move on to meet and confer, and then come back to you for final approval and get these policies in place. So, again, my thanks to the Class and Comp Recruitment and Retention Committee. They include Supervisor Simon and Scott, your, the board appointees to this committee, HR Director Pam Samick, Auditor Controller Kathy Sederlin, Diana Rico, HR Analyst, staffs the committee, Denise Pomeroy, Health Director, another member of the committee, Brian Martin, our Sheriff, Crystal Markatan, DSS Director, myself, Chief Probation Officer Rob Howe, Stephen Carter staffs it, as does Matthew Rothstein. So, we have a great group of folks working on this. And Pam, if you would introduce the two policies. The Hiring Incentive Policy is an all-new policy that we're proposing, and the Employee Referral Policy is one we're proposing to amend.
Good morning. I could not start my video because it says the host isn't allowing it.
Hang on just a second, and let me see if we can resolve that, Pam. Matthew, are you able to resolve that?
I'm not, I don't have an option to. Do you have an option to ask Pam to start video, Carol?
Let's see, I do not have an option to ask her to start. I'm looking at my options for her, so. Yeah, I do not see that option. So, Pam, I guess we'll do it without video, and maybe we can solve it while you're presenting.
Wonderful. The Class and Comp Committee got together, and we, over several months, worked on developing a Hiring Incentive Policy to attract and retain hard-to-fill positions in the county. We defined what hard-to-fill meant in looking at the positions that we are having problems filling, also developing a criteria for how we would define that, which is hard-to-fill has resulted in two failed recruitments in a six-month period. Recruitments that resulted in three to five qualified and available candidates, or recruitments that resulted in candidates declining an offer because of wages and benefits. And this would be for non-entry-level positions. And promotional recruitments are not eligible for this incentive. We've defined 10 positions that, or 10 classes that have been typically hard to fill. And also, twice a year, we will look at those positions in department heads can ask to have another position added to that list during, twice a year. And so, we've split it out into several categories. Our safety, probation, hiring incentives, for deputy sheriff at 6,000, for corrections and dispatchers at 5,000, and deputy probation officers at 6,000. And then, all other positions defined in the policy would be 10% not to exceed $10,000. We've also given you an illustration, just so you can see how these positions would net out.
Pam, I think you can turn on your video now, if you would try.
Okay.
Thank you.
There you are.
Thank you, Pam.
There you go. And the Attachment A is all of the positions that are considered hard-to-fill at this time. There may be some additional positions as department heads also take a look at this policy. And I won't go over all the illustrations, you know, unless you have questions about those. Any questions about the policy?
So, let's go ahead and Supervisor Simon.
No, I just, I don't so much have a question, just a comment on, as Carol did, I want to thank everybody in the committee, obviously coming from the Board of Supervisors standpoint. Really appreciated all of the conversations we've had. This has been a work in progress for, for quite a while now. I'm glad to have it here to have this discussion with the full board. But I know we went back and forth to look at, you know, how we were going to make some impactful opportunities to get those hard-to-fill positions here in the county, and to support our, our directors, you know, and even our elected sheriff, and all the departments that we're having. So, mine was more of a comment of just glad to have the conversation today and be prepared to engage with the rest of the board to hopefully help move these forward and support them. And the other conversation, and I know we're going to go into B, I'll comment on that one when we get to the referral part. But those are the comments that I have today.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I don't have much more to, to add. You know, again, thank you for all the work that was done. There was actually many hours put into this draft. I think this is the first step of trying to make sure that we're maintaining our workforce. If we can get employees in and keep them stable, we will, we will see more work being done, more permits being able to get put out, and just, you know, a happier workforce, not continuously training and get them in here. So, I'm really hopeful for this discussion today.
Any further comments? So, in reviewing this, I do have a few comments. One is, I requested from HR a list of all vacancies that we currently have. And there was a, it's a frozen time, it's a frozen slice of information from a specific timeframe. I'm not saying the words correctly, but hopefully you understand me.
Point in time.
A point in time. And at that time, there was 237 vacant positions. And in doing my own review, so give or take, it's approximately that number. The list that we have only covers about 60 out of those 237 vacant positions. And I think that every one of the positions that are vacant needs to be supported, and how are we going to fill those positions? So, I know the list is a potential flexible list, but I think we just, we don't need a list. I think that if you meet the criteria of you've tried twice in the last six months, and you have not been able to get, you have not had an offer taken, I don't think it should be, "I'm not taking your offer because of your pay." I think it's just, if they don't take the offer, I don't think it should be a specific about pay, because the overall outcome we want here is to fill the positions. It doesn't really matter why the position is not being filled, or why they're not taking the position. We are trying to create an incentive to fill the position. I also think that we should sidestep public safety from that, because I don't want to see us having to go through two recruitments for six months before we do the, the $6,000 incentive. I want to keep that as it is, because I think that's only going to prohibit us from doing what we want with public safety, which is boots-on-the-ground to be able to provide public safety, rather than bureaucracy that slows down that process. But what I didn't see on there was, for example, we have almost 15, I forget if it was administrative assistance or something of that qualification. One of the biggest issues that I can constantly hear is communication with the public. If we're not putting in those key positions that helps us to communicate with the public, which would save so much work for some of the people that are sitting down with applications, some of the people that are sitting down with policy, some of the people that are sitting down with getting, with doing field work and getting work done, then it would take away from their time spent in trying to communicate and keep up with that. And it would help provide those workers that can alleviate that stuff. So, I think it needs to be all. If we meet the criteria, then you're eligible, you submit that. And I would like to see us, because the competition for public safety is insane right now. I've had some communication with some sheriffs in surrounding counties just to kind of get an idea of how things are, are going with their departments in comparison to how things are going here. There used to be about 40, there used to be about 40 candidates at a police academy. Now, there's 10. Those 10 are still being recruited by the same number of counties, which includes us, which makes it that much more difficult. If we can increase that incentive, and I, what I'm thinking about is what we just went through, it's not fully approved, but we went through over with the budget, is we're going to be using cannabis tax for this. And I think this is the perfect place for cannabis tax. It's one-time money, rather than continuous money. And one of the four reasons that people voted for this was law enforcement. So, I think increasing that to, to 10,000, I think, would make us highly competitive, to be attractive, because without public safety, we are unable to do some of the other critical parts that we need to get done and do here. So, again, I think it needs to be for all positions, and including, I think it should, it says that it's not eligible for in-house. Well, if one of our staff members went to school to obtain a master's to be able to get into a position, I wouldn't mind rewarding them and saying, "Thank you for going out of your way and doing continued development of your own knowledge and your own expertise in order to obtain a job that we are struggling to fill." It's not like they would automatically get the 10%. It would still need to be a position that's been hard to fill, and they've stepped up and gotten approved for that. And so, I think any way that we can try to help people move forward, any way that we can try to get people in, I just kind of want to open this up a lot more than what it is that I read. And I also think that on the list, I saw something that I think is just, it's not that it's inappropriate, it's unnecessary, because we can do this already. I don't think we need to put directors or department heads on the list. Those are contracts. We can add that to any contract we want, whenever we sign those. There is no union, there is no MOU that has to be signed or approved. We can do that on our own. At least, that has been my assumption. I'm seeing Ms. Grant picking up the mic.
Many jurisdictions do retain the services of various department heads by contract. This county historically has not done.
Okay, so it has to be through the management approval. It's not a union, but it's still.
Through the resolution, the management resolution process.
Well, then I would say that it's, maybe we need to look at making it more flexible, so it's not just set at a specific thing. Because I think that it is important that we don't have an empty space at our department heads, and that it gives us that leverage to do what we need to do. So, that's, that's my main comment right there. Supervisor Scott.
You know, I, I like where you're going, but I think we need to have a starting place. I would like to see what the, the budget would be if we completely opened this up to all positions. I know we, we, you know, we want to fill all our positions, but I think we have to look at this piece as just one brick in the wall, and that we have more work to do to try to get people in those seats. I think we need to start with the hard-to-fill positions, see how this goes budget-wise, and then, you know, then come back if we need to, and add more positions. But I'm a little fearful of completely opening it up.
And if I may rebut, there's hard-to-fill positions that are filled. And so, that part did not make sense to me as to why they're on the hard-to-fill position, other than maybe historically they're hard to fill, but they're filled today. Why are they on the list versus a position that's still vacant that we're struggling to fill? So, that, that was one of my questions when I went through the list again of what our current vacancies are. I have a list of about a dozen to maybe two dozen that are on the hard-to-fill list, but are not on our vacancy list at this moment in time.
So, I think I might offer that, you know, we're coming out of a pandemic. And during the pandemic, our recruitment has just kind of been in a holding pattern. So, I, I think, I mean, it's certainly true that we carry high vacancy rates all the time, but, but the vacancies you're seeing now may look different than they would if we weren't in the process of coming out of a pandemic. We're, we're not getting applicant pools. So, you know, hopefully it will look different. I mean, we, we could authorize something like this as a pilot project, if, if you'd like to try it, and, and let the committee monitor the success of it. The committee put a lot of time and energy into it, and, and honestly, we have the best minds, you know, on that committee, folks that study these issues and are dealing with these vacancies. The rate that you see there for the deputy sheriff, since you mentioned that in particular, it's presently 5,000. The sheriff indicated his desire to have it be raised to 6,000 in order to be competitive. And that would be a flat rate, not subject to the percent of gross pay.
Supervisor Simon.
You know, and just as Tina said, you know, ultimately, we are looking for an overall fix. This is just one tool that we would, as the committee, working, and obviously myself and Tina are on there, but we really had the expertise of, you know, the directors. You heard the list of folks that were on the committee that put this together. And moving forward, we felt like, all right, this is a good start, at least with the hard-to-fill positions. We got more work to do, there is no doubt about it. And this is only one spoke in the wheel. And, you know, trying to address everything on that conversation is going to be a real challenge. This is something we put together. Obviously, raising it, we understand that there is going to be, you know, a workforce challenge for everybody right now. But this gives us an opportunity, one more tool in the box, for our directors, for, you know, to, to go out there and help recruit. We have such a great workforce here in, in Lake County. Our employees that have been here forever, we just honored one for 30 years. We have folks that are one, three, five, that just put every day in. And our job, you know, overall, is to try and just add to that workforce, to take the work and the stress off of them that they are right now. And I think what we put together here is a good start. I like Carol's idea of getting something implemented today, and then coming back and giving this full board a report in about a quarter from now, I think would be realistic, because now we're just opening up on June 15th. We come back sometime in September, say, hey, you know, this is either working or it isn't. And we can look at some different opportunities. I think today's discussion, you know, to try and stay focused on what we brought today, Israel important. We're not going to fix everything. There is no silver bullet, but I think this is a step in the right direction. We, as a committee, you know, had plenty of conversation on, all right, how do we do where it can be something that is effective and be put to work to bring in those hard-to-fill positions and get those put together? So, that's kind of my thoughts on how we move forward, and be willing as a committee to do the work, to come back and give the reports as a full board on how we're moving forward, and if the incentives are really moving in the direction that we want to. Then we could look at if we've got to expand it at that time. Could do, have some more time to look that over. But, you know, I'd really like to be able to move forward with what was brought by the committee, so.
Supervisor Crandall.
I really like that. The two years is added to repay, if it has a hiring incentive. I really wish it could be a little more, but I know that, you know, you guys probably hashed this out for quite some time. You know, I know being in these committees, you just go back and forth on, you know, different things. But I too agree with enhancing the safety to around 10,000 as, as similar to the incentive itself. So, I'll just highlight that.
So, there, I do have one question, and then just a consensus comment. Is there a maximum to be spent that maybe we want to kick it back and get a report on once we reach a certain amount? Just kind of, do we, do we want to say at $100,000? Let's see how this is working, or if we don't even spend that much?
So, if I could clarify, the assumption has been that we would spend cannabis tax to cover this cost for general fund departments. But for self-funded departments that have salary savings, the expectation would be that they cover it themselves. So, we could, I mean, we can return at whatever interval the board wishes, but, but if you'd like to set that on the basis of funding spent, we could. I, I honestly think recruitment outcomes might be a better driver of, of our success with it.
I would suspect that if we came back in two months saying we already spent $100,000, that, that would be a positive recruitment.
Yeah, that would be a miracle. That would also be a miracle. But hopefully. But hopefully in three or four months, we'd have some real traction with it.
So at this moment, it's an unlimited amount, but we don't anticipate it to go over a certain amount because of the list that we have, take away the positions that are already filled, and again, that list decreases yet again. And then I brought up the directors, because to be very honest with you, and it doesn't sound good, but at the same time, it's the reality of life. It's a struggle for Lake County to compete when it comes to finding new directors. We all know this. I think 10,000 needs to be more flexible. And I think that we need to just state and look at that there is the possibility of a signing bonus and that we discuss those as needed rather than to limit it to 10,000, because to be honest, at 10,000, it's, I don't think it's going to sweeten the deal all that much better.
So Mr. Chair, on a related note, there's a second policy that we'll be coming back to you, and it's the relocation policy. We felt that these policies before you today were the most critical for now, but in just a few short weeks, you'll also be considering the relocation policy, which presently provides for 3,500 for verified relocation expenses. And I imagine that we're going to recommend that that be increased as well, and so conceivably, department head would be eligible for that as well, so the combined amounts may be reasonable.
Any further comments before we open it up to the public? Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Let's start with the board chambers.
Biting the crowd.
Elbow your way in.
Only three minutes.
So I appreciate the feedback on the increase to $10,000, and we'll talk about a little bit about being competitive. I wouldn't say we were competitive at 6,000. I'd say we're more competitive, obviously, with an increase from 5,000 to 6,000. When you talk about competitive, the neighboring agencies around us also offer hiring incentives. Ukiah Police Department offers $10,000 for academy graduates. They offer an $8,000 residency incentive for you to live in the city of Ukiah. And for laterals, they offer a $20,000 hiring incentive plus the $8,000. So that's what we're competing with. It's tough to compete with that. A while back, we changed the name of the committee to include the fact that we want to focus on retention. When we make these big concessions to get people to come here, we also need to keep in mind that the current employees we have are arguably more important. They have the experience, they have the dedication. And in my department, I'm dealing with a retention issue as much as a recruitment issue. I'm hiring people, but I'm losing people faster than that. Last year's, so he cut me off, maybe hiring incentive for--
Your three minutes are up.
Yeah, okay. At last year's budget meeting, I came to you with a number of 121 people that were actually employed for the department. This year, that number dropped to 114, and the days following that, I got some additional resignations. Our hiring continues to be challenging. Every time that I report that there's people that are in the background process, I can all but guarantee you that some of them may not continue in that process, and that is the case, as I reported last time. We've lost some of the people that were in that background process. And I think it's just very important that maybe our next focus of the conversation is to work on that retention piece of it. I have some ideas what that might look like. I'm sure that there's other people in the committee. But in addition to the recruitment, which is very important and very much appreciated, we need to make sure that we take care of the employees that are working here currently. Thank you.
Thank you. And I agree that this is a compartmentalized conversation on the beginning process of becoming a Lake County employee. I see no further comments from the board chambers. I see a couple of hands up in the Zoom room. Let's go ahead and start with Director Metcalf.
Thank you, Chair Sabatier. I just kind of wanted to comment, there was something you said earlier about some of our hard-to-fill positions are indeed filled. And speaking on behalf of, you know, Behavioral Health Services, yeah, I agree that some of our hard-to-fill positions are filled, but what Sheriff Martin is, he didn't say today, but he said it before, our department sort of just becomes a training ground. People come in, you know, at a less than desirable salary, get trained up, and then move on. So yes, we have filled our hard-to-fill positions, but we spend a lot of money in training these folks to get them up to speed and get them where they need to be, and then a year or two later, they move on. So I just, I appreciated what you said, Chair Sabatier, about that, that, yeah, we can fill them, but it's still problematic working with the whole revolving door thing of people coming in and out. So I just wanted to throw in my two cents worth there, so thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And Director Markitan? Good morning.
I just want to kind of, second or third, as the case may be, what Sheriff Martin and Director Metcalf have already stated, which is that we are not able to retain employees, and we spend an incredible amount of time and money on training employees, and once they're trained, they leave for other counties where, you know, a lot of times they can work their way, so continue to live in Lake County, and they make more money. And so it's not, it doesn't, you know, hate a big committee to figure out why that's happening. I think that what we need to do is pay employees in a way that is on par with the surrounding counties in particular, so that we can retain staff. Otherwise, I think that, you know, we are spending enormous amounts of money in recruiting and training that then just goes out our doors. And I can, you know, I know one of the areas that I have employment specialists who are responsible for CalFresh, CalWork, and also for Medi-Cal Peace Management, for all the people who referred to earlier as being on Medi-Cal in this county. We are 58% vacant in that area, and it's the largest area in our department. It is also the area where we most often pull disaster services workers. And so that, we are depleted. And it's not the only area, but it is the area that is most notable. So I just encourage to go beyond the small fixes to get people here, because that does not mean that all of the world's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Director DeLeon.
Good morning, Board. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and I'd like to start by thanking the committee for putting this together for today's discussion. Anything that we have that can make our positions more attractive is certainly helpful. Chair Sabatier, you mentioned perhaps removing the attachment A with the positions, or at least opening it to all positions, and perhaps if the board decides to go in that route, my comments will be moot. But I have a position here that we're currently recruiting, and I would respectfully request that we add it to the list if we're going to stay with the list. I recognize that, you know, I don't want to open a can of worms here by asking modifications already to the list, but we know that this position's going to be difficult to recruit, and that's county surveyor. I suppose we could consider it a deputy director position, which would be covered under Section 4, but I'd like to see that perhaps added specifically to either Section 4 or Section 10 of that list, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And then one last hand is, oh, there's more, but Denise Palmeroy, Director Palmeroy.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to echo what Carol and Pam and the other directors and Sheriff Martin has already said. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but being in a self-funded department that requires staff in order to draw down the dollars that we get from our programs and not being able to have that staff is really difficult, not only to the department but to our community, because if we're not, if we don't have staff to draw down the dollars and get the work done, then every couple of years, the state re-looks at it or the feds and say, well, you're not spending the money that we gave you, so we're going to take it away. So it becomes this circle of, you know, just the spiral circle. The retraining, the retaining piece as well, you know, we are the biggest training ground over in public health. We get, you know, licensed staff pretty fresh out of school. They stay a year, two years, and then they leave. We've been, we have positions that have been vacant for nine years, four years, five years. So I greatly appreciate the conversation and just want to echo the good work from Carol and the CCR team, and hope this conversation can continue to help our community get the services that they deserve to have. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I see a hand going up and down, so I'm just going to ask if this person wants to make a comment, hands back up. Julie Colfax.
Thank you. I apologize for that up and down. I was kind of make, I wasn't sure if we were in public comment or not, I needed to wake up. Julie Colfax, licensed mental health therapist and Lake County Mental Advisory Board Chair. I just wanted to point out that I understand this specifically addressing, obviously, county positions and what you can do to help with filling those slots. However, I think it's very important to point out that especially in behavioral health, in mental health, while at all levels, issue, our primary restricting factor with providing mental health and substance abuse treatment services to our county constituents that need services has, in my opinion, primarily been the limitation on qualified employees, qualified therapists, qualified providers for that. And that's not just particular to the county employment, but also through, and not just the Lake County Behavioral Health, but also through tribal health, also through Adventist Health. Our county has, so it's not just the competition for the positions at behavioral health that you're looking at. You're competing with the other local agencies as well for those employees, and it's definitely a very serious problem that I know we have, as we talked about, there's the homelessness issues and many other things that tie into mental health. And so I just wanted to put my support out there that especially in the realm of mental and behavioral health, it's a serious need to get solid employees with good training and good background and good education that will stay on and continue to work in the long term. I know turnover for Todd is absolutely ridiculous for therapists, and the openings he has available there are notoriously hard to fill, not just right now.
Thank you for your comments. And I see no further hands up and no further comment in the board chamber. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Any further comments? Supervisor Pyska.
I appreciate the work of the committee, and I appreciate being able to hear from so many of the directors today. I think this is a really great starting place to see how we're going to progress as things open up. I would be in favor of raising up the deputy sheriffs or the probation, wait, which one? The law enforcement one, from 6,000 to 10,000, if that's agreeable to everybody else, because there's such a critical need and because that cannabis funding is directly for law enforcement. But I would, I would like to see how this plays out in the next three to four months and how successful we can be with these recruitments.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Supervisor Simon?
I think you have Carol before me.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would agree with that, and I assume the sheriff would agree with that. I also think we need to accept the point of--
Your time is up.
We, sorry. We need to accept the point of the Public Works Director, the county surveyor position should be added, and it may have been overlooked because it hasn't been vacant for a long time, although it's about to be, given the retirement of a longtime employee. So in terms of the best timing on when to come back, my recommendation, to give you a report on how it's helped, my recommendation would be three months from the time it is implemented. If we're able to complete the meet and confer process between now and your next meeting, conceivably, it could be approved July 13th. So three months from then would be the, about the right time that we might be seeing a difference in our recruitment outcomes.
Thank you. So I'm just going to make one final comment as an argument for why I think we really need to look at opening this up. Again, I used a list that was provided to me, which is just a point in time of vacancies, and the ones that check out for what is vacant, and so this doesn't include the list of folks who don't have vacancies that are on the list of hard-to-fill, which includes directors, which are typically the highest level paid. The average pay of those vacancies that are on the list is about $30 an hour. The average pay of the ones that are not on the list is $22 an hour. Those are going to be a whole lot harder to fill if we don't do anything to try and get them in, and they are the support staff to getting the work done. So I'm still very uneasy with just pushing this forward when it seems very top-heavy as to who we're trying to recruit versus looking at what does our county need. And I get it that it means opening it up, and it might cost us more, but we also have an opportunity with the cannabis taxes that we have already collected and will continue to collect to try and fill some of these gaps that makes it really difficult for all of our staff to get all of their work done. And so I would also like to, so that's my final comment as to why I think we need to try and open this up, because having a pay of $14 an hour, which is what we have currently for one of our positions, and no incentive, we're just not going to fill that position. And so this is what I'm looking at. That's my final comment. If someone else wants to speak on that, then I'm happy to entertain that discussion. There have been some comments, I just want to make sure. Do we have a consensus to request to increase these public safety up to 10,000? So I see three nods. Yes.
So I guess my question would be, we have them separated, some are $6,000, some are $5,000, so is it going to be a blanket 10 across the board on the deputy sheriffs in probation? Are we adding probation to that?
So let me go back to that, because you're right that there was some separation. Excuse me for that.
But I would be in agreeance of it, but just want to make sure we're--
So what you see on the sheet that has the calculations for comparison purposes shows what the deputy sheriff increases would be if they were based on the 10% of the gross wages, but they're actually earning, they make 5,000 now, and so we would make it 10,000 if there is consensus from your board. And then if we're doing that, Mr. Sheriff, wouldn't the, don't you think we'd also want to make it for the other comparable law enforcement classes? Yeah. So all of those that you see that have something in the far right column that says requested by department head, those numbers would change to 10 based on, Mr. Sheriff, how about deputy sheriff corrections?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I can speak for other departments' budgeting abilities, but yeah, I think so.
Well, all of those positions are general fund, so I can speak for that.
And I think it's perfectly the right thing to do to treat both our correctional officers as well as our peace officers that are patrolling the streets in the same realm. So I'm in agreement that all of those, that's why I stated public safety, since those three are under that public safety guideline, that they all be upgraded to 10,000, and I would love to see what that can do for us.
Okay. And so then, again, if there's consensus, everything that is in that far right column that the title is requested by department head would go up to 10 if--
Let me open up that chart, because I had the policy open, just to make sure that I'm saying yes to something I absolutely agree--
Yeah, and this too is a point in time, you know, when salaries change, these numbers will change too, but this is how it would stand for now. We thought it would be helpful for you to see what it would look like.
So deputy sheriff, deputy sheriff corrections, public safety dispatcher, probation officer, and welfare fraud investigator supervisor. I'm going to say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Simon, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
You know, I just, you know, as we--
You know, I just, you know, as we work through these policies, once again, like I said, we have, this is one tool to get some hard to fill positions in place. We've heard it from multiple directors, is that retention side of it. So, you know, I just, as we go into those conversations, you know, making sure that the folks that are here dedicated their lives, are working every day for us, even right now as we speak here, that have been here for one, three, five, 10, 15, 20 years, that as we're making these recruitment incentives and other things, that we balance that with, you know, the retention part. And, you know, I thought the committee did a good job of bringing, you know, a proposal instead of opening it up, they're looking at, all right, because we know it's only one tool. That retention of the current employees that we have that are coming in every day is the most important thing. They're the heart of Lake County's workforce here to take care of our constituents. And I know we've got more work to do there and we don't want to be putting too many incentives on folks that, as we've already heard, may come in for two years and then they're gone. They go somewhere else. So I just want to keep us focused as a board on that because we can't just open everything up. We want to make sure that we get those incentives set right to hopefully help add to the workforce, but also the next step of this process is going to be taking care of our current employees that do all the hard work. And I, you know, I know we say it here at the board and everything, but we understand what that retention means. It means keeping the great people that are currently working for us every day. And so this is just one tool and we want to make sure we balance that right so it's accepted that, hey, these things that we're putting together now are just to help hopefully alleviate some of the extra work that is being burdened by all of our departments and all of our employees that we currently have right now. And this is just a tool to hopefully help them, but we understand that retention part is a big part of the conversation going forward.
It's the other 50%, absolutely.
No, it's the other 80% as far as I'm concerned. This is just a tool to get, you know, those vacant positions that have been there, we're never going to fill them all. That just ain't going to happen. But hopefully this will take a big chunk of that away, but then, once we get through this stuff, we can start to really talk about that retention stuff of our great employees we have coming in every day that work hard for us.
And I absolutely agree. It's not, this is a chip to, a part of the solution. But I would say that those that are working without a colleague in a seat next to them because it's been vacant for so long are possibly working overtime or are looked at to do more than just a one-person job should be able to get done. This will alleviate a lot of the stress and hopefully allow for a better quality of life from those that work for the county by having more people in those seats. And yes, this is just a part of the solution. There's more to come, hopefully. So we got the consensus on that part and I think that's the only changes that we are looking at. And I believe all you're looking for is consensus for today.
Do I also have your consensus that we will add the county surveyor to the hard-to-fill list?
I absolutely agree with Director Deleon. I know he's been working hard to try to fill that position already.
And our HR director had a comment?
Yes.
Yes, we do have, I'd like to add two more positions. I received an email from the Director of Animal Control that the vet and vet tech have been notoriously hard and he would like to add those to this list. And I would agree that those are hard-to-fill positions.
Aren't the, are the vet techs at a salary or are they contract?
They're salary.
Okay.
Both positions are salary. The vet used to be contract, but now it's salary.
Any conversation on those two?
I would agree with that.
Okay. It looks like there's consensus, so we all agree on that. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And then Director Samick, if you want to continue on to Part B, so we make sure we don't miss any part of this conversation.
Yes. The second program we would like to bring back, we had this as a pilot program about a year ago, is the Employee Referral Program. Some of our greatest employees come from employee referrals. And this is a way to acknowledge our current staff for referring employees and, you know, open that up as a way of recruitment in addition. So what we would like to do is to increase the reward to 750 from 500 for regular positions and then a $1,000 referral bonus for hard-to-fill positions. Same criteria as before. The employee has to be here 90 days before the employee would receive the hiring incentive. And the only other caveat is that the employee that gets referred has to list their name in the application, so we have a mechanism for tracking.
Thank you for that. Any comments or questions on Part B for the referral program?
So, Mr. Chair, we're recommending raising the amounts because we have had only minimal success with this program and also as another small recognition of the value of our existing workforce and another little piece of the puzzle with more to come.
Absolutely. Every one of us have our own little circles that we know and we can bring in through our network some great employees. If there's no further comment, let's open it up for the public. Any comments on the referral policy? Seeing nothing in the board chambers and nothing in the Zoom room. Let's go ahead and bring it back. And again, all you're looking for is consensus to move forward and bring back the final policy?
Yes.
Okay. I believe you have consensus on Part B.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, just to add to that, especially a little from the last, but it kind of fits with this, just keeping people here. There's a lot of people that are from here that leave and then they don't stay here. And word of mouth of people that work here or that live here or are part of the county, you know, government could say, hey, you could work here and do the same thing. Oh, I didn't know that. And then there's a referral there as well. So I, you know, when we talk about retention, keeping people in Lake County that are from Lake County so they can have some pride in it, that's one of the main reasons why I wanted to be in this position was to, a lot of our people that we graduated with, went to high school with, they leave because it's more lucrative somewhere else. One of my high school buddies is running for sheriff in a different county and I'm like, and why isn't he here working with us, you know? So not just recruiting, not just word of mouth to get people here, but keep people in the county, if that makes any sense, so.
They know the county better than anyone else. So that does it for that item? You have what you need?
That's what we need. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Simon.
Last comment here. You know, Supervisor Sabatier, when you were talking about, you know, obviously we made a decision to move forward with the law enforcement stuff to bring it up. So I will bring it up right now. I know that we have it at the, went from the 500 to the 750, you know, at the time when we were having with the committee and everything, you know, I thought it was, you know, the right number. I would like to offer that for all eligible positions, not only the hard-to-fill positions be $1,000, but raising that outlined, all the employee positions be up to $1,000 for our referral process. I know it's at 750 right now, but I'd like to put that on the table. I mean, talking about being more impactful for our current employees, you know, the 750, a great step forward, but I think $1,000 would maybe incentivize it a little bit more. And, you know, yes, it is, as it says here, it will be a taxable income, but, you know, I don't know what that adds out to. It'd be around 850 bucks or something like that that you'd get if you refer to a friend or a family member or someone to get a job. And so, you know, that's a big impact on a monthly basis for our current employees. So I'll offer it today, whether or not it goes anywhere. And I, you know, I was comfortable in the conversations with the committee at 750, but I think, you know, the $1,000 should be offered, so.
No, I appreciate you bringing that up so that we can have further conversation about what is the right incentive for people? Because how many people have been hired that could have gotten that referral amount, but the amount wasn't large enough for them to remember or recognize that that was even available and maybe they missed out on it. If it's at a certain level, then everybody might be keeping their eye on that a little bit more. And it's also when people are looking to recruit, well, if you're recruiting for me to work with you, that means you enjoy where you work. And so it has a lot of positives along to that. I like the idea, especially the amount that was done in referral, I don't know if you call them stipends or payments, was minimal. I don't think that increasing it to 1,000 is necessarily going to hurt our budget abilities. So I'm in favor of it. Supervisor Pyska.
It's a nice round number that everybody can remember.
So if we could, I think it might be helpful to have Pam speak to the rationale for distinguishing the two and whether or not there's really a compelling need to distinguish a referral from, you know, a regular referral to a hard-to-fill referral. Pam, could you speak to that?
Certainly. The rationale really was, we were, again, trying to focus on these hard-to-fill positions, but I think it's a great idea to have it be a nice round number and have it be $1,000, no matter what type of position you refer.
I agree.
I know that we have three. Okay. Did you have something that you wanted to add? Okay. Well, it looks like we are looking at a unanimous consensus to make that change and...
So no distinction in the type of position, just a flat 1,000 works?
Thank you for bringing that up. And if we are done with this item, which I believe we are, I think we should take a 10-minute break. And actually, I'm sorry, I meant to do something to save someone some time. We are done with our timed items, but I did want to see if we can take up Director Metcalfe's items, 7.4 and 7.5, as I believe those will be quick. And so let's go ahead and open those items and then we'll take a break. So 7.4, A, consideration to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. And B, consideration of Amendment 1 to the agreement between the County of Lake and Redwood Community Services, Inc., for the Family Stabilization Program provided at the NEST during fiscal year 2122, for an increase in the contract maximum to $280,632.08, and authorize the board chair to sign the amendment. Director Metcalfe.
Thank you, Chair Sabatier, for squeezing us in before the break. I'm very grateful. So I have with me here today our administrative deputy director, Elise Jones, that will hopefully articulate this better than I can because we initially were planning to pull these items, but I'm going to turn it over to Elise to explain a little bit about both of these items because I believe they're, the issue is the same for both. So Elise, thank you for being here.
My pleasure. Good morning supervisors. So first of all, Chair Sabatier, I thank you for your meticulous attention to detail. And unfortunately, you did catch an error that passed all of us, so let's just be accountable here. So for item 7.4, which I believe is RCS the NEST Family Stabilization, the contract amount, just for reference, last fiscal year 2021 was $221,000, so the increase is erroneous. So the contract needs to be pulled in order to correct that amount. It should be identical to last fiscal year. Same goes for item 7.5, which is the RCS Harbor, pardon me. And just some background on that contract. Historically, we have actually had two contracts.
So hold on, hold on, we're only on 7.4, so let's not speak about both 7.4 and 7.5. And if I heard you correctly, and I apologize, I was receiving a note that the original contract of the $221,000 for the NEST still remains?
Well, it would expire at the end of this fiscal year, so my understanding is that we're just moving our contract into the next fiscal year and the amount is incorrect.
So we just approved the NEST contract for $221,000 in April 27th, April something. I believe it was on our April meeting. So at this point then, what, I believe it is the 27th. I'm looking at it real quick. Yes, it was, let me just open up the signed agreement, make sure that the date range is correct. Yes, so 2021 with the NEST was agreed upon and approved already on April 27th. So at this point, we would just pull the item unless I'm incorrect. So I think what I'm going to do, since there seems to be some confusion, is we are going to take a 10-minute break. If you can review that April 27th agenda and make sure that that's the approval that you required so that we don't just pull this item when we don't need to pull this item. That way we can make sure that we're all on the same page and taking the correct actions.
We'll do that supervisor.
Okay. We'll be back at 11:16 and take a 10-minute break. All right. And just want to check in, everything Zoom-wise is good to go? Do I need to check in with Matthew?
No, we're good.
We're good? Okay. All right. Apologize for the delay. 11:16 has come and gone, but we are back. It is 11:22. Let's go ahead and reconvene. We were discussing item 7.4. Director Metcalfe, if you can let me know what actions you wish to take.
After discussion with my administrative deputy director, we have decided that this item has been submitted in error and we would like to withdraw, pull item 7.4.
Okay. Let's, is there any discussion from the board? And hopefully we will, if there needs to be a correction, we'll see that in the next upcoming agenda. And any comments from the public? And seeing none in the boardroom and none on the Zoom room, we'll go ahead and just close down this item. It has been pulled. We don't need to do a vote on that. Okay, I didn't think so. And let's move on to item 7.5. A, consideration to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. And B, consideration to approve Amendment 1 to the agreement between the County of Lake and Redwood Community Services Incorporated for the MHSA Transitional Age Youth Drop-In Center for fiscal year 2021-22, for an increase in the contract maximum to $261,000, and authorize the board chair to sign the amendment. Director Metcalfe.
And again, thank you for the 10-minute break. It is much appreciated. After a very robust and intense discussion, we have decided to do the same thing. This is another item that was submitted in error and we wish to withdraw and pull this item.
All right. Any discussion from board members on that? Let's open it up to the public again. Any comments on us pulling this item? And seeing none, then that will close out item 7.5. And again, hopefully if there is a correction, we'll see that on the 7/13, which is our next board meeting.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your understanding.
Thank you very much to you and your staff. Let's go ahead and move on to item 7.2. Consideration of Agreement for Investment Advisory and Management Services, CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are also recommending the pulling of this item from today's agenda. It does need a little more work before it is ready for your approval and so we'll have it back on your agenda in July.
Perfect. Any comments or questions about that? And let's open it up to the public. Any comments or questions regarding this item being pulled? And we will see that again, hopefully either the 13th or the 20th and it will be back on the agenda. So let's go ahead and move on to item 7.3. Consideration of Amendment to the County of Lake COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Work Site Protocol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, I'm introducing our HR Director Pam Samick. Hopefully can turn her video on at will now. I hope so, Pam.
Looks like it.
There she is, thank you. So Pam has really spearheaded some of the changes that we've needed to make on relatively short notice. As you know, there was a discrepancy between the rules of CDC, California Department of Public Health, and Cal OSHA. It finally got resolved on Thursday and so we quickly issued guidance to county employees Thursday evening. Thanks to Pam for making that happen. And then we also have the larger-scale amendment to the protocol that she's going to present today.
Good morning. Yes, we were very excited to see OSHA update that to match the CDC recommendations and we've got some very happy employees. So far, we've received about 400 of the certifications back in, so that's excellent news. We updated approximately nine sections of the protocol, mostly around the updated face covering sections for vaccinated versus unvaccinated employees. Now, upon request, unvaccinated employees will have to receive an N95 respirator mask if they want to for voluntary use. We... We updated training to go with that for any employee that wishes to use that. We still must provide all of our employees face masks who want to continue wearing them. We updated the frequent sanitation sections. Employees still have to make sure that they're keeping high-touch areas clean and frequently wiping down as necessary. We updated the physical distancing. There are no longer, it's no longer necessary to have the physical barriers and social distancing for our employees. We still need to keep those up in the customer service, front-facing customer service areas to protect our employees, because we don't have 100% vaccination at this point. Excuse me. Also, we updated the sections for vaccinated employees who come into close contact. We no longer have to send them home unless they are symptomatic. We updated the COVID testing requirements. We still need to provide testing for exposures and for unvaccinated employees at no cost and on our time. We deleted the travel ban and made updates to the employee high-risk by deleting the shelter-in-place, since that's no longer a consideration. But we would still need to, where appropriate for the position, offer remote telecommuting to high-risk employees. And then we, of course, added our certification for vaccine status and then added an addendum for training for the N95 respirators. And that was it on the changes for the protocol.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any comments from supervisors? So I did have a few things I wanted to look at. On page three of the document, which is also page three of the PDF, it says, "All county offices will maintain a supply and shall require the use of the following," and it has face covering, surgical masks, but it doesn't have the exemptions in there. So I'm kind of confused how that works, but then you have to read later on that if you're vaccinated, you don't necessarily have to put on a face covering. But right there in those bullet points, it almost seems like we're mandating still that everyone has to wear a face mask, or some sort of face covering or things like that. So I was wondering if that needs to kind of be massaged a bit?
Yeah, we can add it into that section. Because it's covered in another section, I didn't also update it in that section. We were updating this with a very quick turnaround. We didn't get the final notification until about 2:00 in the afternoon from OSHA. So it was a fairly quick turnaround.
Okay. And just because some people might stop reading right there and think that that's their actual requirements for all employees when there's definitely further information along. On page four, and I'm actually going to skip that part, but I'll just say, it basically says that any in-person interaction where a member of the public cannot wear a face covering. If we have the honor system, then those with a mask are potentially unvaccinated. They could be vaccinated and just want to continue to be safe. And those without a mask, because of the honor system, would be that they are vaccinated. And so nobody would be denied an in-person interaction unless they made a statement that I'm unvaccinated and I don't want to wear a mask. I just, I don't know, I was kind of curious about how that all functioned.
Let me take a look on that, and I can comment on that after.
It's the third-to-last paragraph of page four.
Okay. Hang on, I don't have the protocol open. Just one sec.
So if we're talking about the third paragraph from the bottom on page four, is that right?
Yes.
So that is left over from the prior version of the protocol? And so maybe that needs to be stricken in this new version under the circumstances?
Yes. That would be true.
Okay.
Yes. So I can update that, yes.
Again, this was a lot on very short notice, so we were really rushing to get it on the agenda.
And I'm not unhappy with the document in front of me. I just want to make sure that we're not accidentally, what's the word I'm looking for? Contradicting ourselves in what we're saying you can do, but then in our policy, it doesn't quite.
And there's a way in which that does contradict the reopening of things.
Yes. And then my last one is the staying at home if you feel sick. I read through the Cal OSHA document, and it specifically states if you have close contact with COVID-19, or if you have COVID-19, it doesn't just say if you feel ill, you have to quarantine. Wondering if we can reduce that to what Cal OSHA says, because people still get sick. People are still going to have 100 degrees of fever. It doesn't mean they have COVID, but if you know that you've had close contact with a COVID case, or if you know you have COVID, then that's two separate things. Just kind of wondering if we can reduce the amount of time that we request quarantine to staff just for having a cold or the actual flu or other things that may. It's unfortunate that the symptoms are so overlapping. I wish it was really specific and unique to COVID-19, but at the same time, I feel like we are unfortunately burdening those who may just have had a cold for two days. Yes, stay home. That part, not a problem. If you're sick, do not come to work. But the 10-day quarantine seems excessive unless maybe we put in there, unless you come with the proof that you don't have COVID-19. But I don't see that on there either. And I don't know if we can force that, but then that would make a difference between a 10-day quarantine, which makes us lose productivity, which makes them possibly have to use more of their sick time versus just being forced to do it. And I don't know. I just, it was uncomfortable, and it's not in the Cal OSHA guidelines. I'm looking at the Cal OSHA guidelines right now. It's on subsection 10A in page 13, and it really says, "COVID-19 cases with COVID-19 symptoms shall not return to work until," and it talks about close contact later on. Persons who had a close contact may return to work as follows, but it never says if you're ill that you have to quarantine.
Really, this would be for unvaccinated employees, would still have to quarantine if they have COVID-like symptoms.
And in the Cal OSHA, it does not separate between vaccinated or not vaccinated at all. And so it's not that level of separation. I just wanted to bring that up because it wasn't an exact overlap with what Cal OSHA was putting out in their document. So if it's possible to review that section, just because I hate to say to somebody 10-day quarantine when we don't have to say 10-day quarantine.
Okay.
And of course, this is just me speaking. I'd love to hear from the rest of the board rather than go with just one person's comments.
You know, I agree with that. We're going to continue being sick, but it's not always going to be COVID, so we need to make sure that we're doing the right things in our policies.
And as you know, this policy, protocol, has been updated many, many times. And I would just like to ask that you give us an opportunity, since we rushed this through, to have it on. You know, we knew how important it was to put this forward. Let us work on the cleanup of any little detail we might have missed like that, and we can have it on your consent agenda for any little final cleanup on the 13th, rather than rush through whatever the fix should be right now, because we might miss a corresponding section.
I did not expect those changes to be implemented today. Hopefully, by the 13th, we might have enough time to bring it back. I just wanted to bring up those subtle issues. And Cal OSHA, no offense to them, did us no favor by waiting till the afternoon of Thursday to provide guidance, when they know that everybody in the counties meet on Tuesdays and have to have their agendas out by a certain time. So definitely no fault to our staff. There's a lot to read through, and even when you're reading it, you have to read it multiple times, because it can get very confusing with what you're reading. And it looks like we had consensus on, just looking for all the changes that I spoke of, consensus on that? Okay.
But if you would approve it as written, knowing that it's going to come back with a few corrections on the 13th, it would enable the taking down of the shields and things except where the public-facing contact is. And I think people want to do that.
Absolutely.
The masking guidance is already out there.
Yes. Any further comments before we open it up to the public?
No.
Okay. Let's open it up to the public. I see none in the boardroom, and I see none in the Zoom room, so let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I would like to approve the amendment to the County of Lake COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Work Site Protocol with the suggested revisions to come back on July 13 and direct staff to continue and return with future amendments to the protocol on an as-needed basis. Will that cover it in the motion?
I think so, and you have a thumbs up from the most important thumb you can get.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So thanks again, Pam, for getting it on here. And I know it was a lot, so we'll clean it up a little bit more. Thank you.
Definitely appreciate that. 7.6. Consideration of the following Advisory Board appointments. Emergency Medical Care Committee, first five Lake Commission, and Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee. Are there any questions on any of the applications that we received? There seems to be enough room for all of them within the committees they are looking to get on. I see none coming from the board. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anyone from the public have any comments on the applicants for those specific committees? I see nothing in the Zoom room, and I see nothing in the board, and I believe that we should be able to offer all of these at once. Ms. Grant, is that okay? Or do you want to do each committee?
It's preferable to do each committee in case there is an issue.
That way, we don't have to back out the whole thing. Gotcha.
Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to appoint Darren Howard, or maybe saying that wrong, Heward, to the EMC, the Emergency Medical Committee.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Simon, a second from Supervisor Crandall. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the first five Lake County vacancies, Taryn Benson and Justin Gaddy, and just want to add that there were many more applicants for the first five committee, but they went through an application or interview process, and then these were the two that the commission selected.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Dale Stobie for the Community Vision Forum Planning Committee.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Crandall. Johanna, roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last item for public session is 7.1, Supervisor's Calendar. Let's start with Supervisor Simon.
You tricked me. I thought we had one more item. I apologize.
If we do, let me know.
Yeah, so just want to report on some of the meetings we had. Obviously, once again, moving forward with coming out of our COVID pandemic, just want to say that we had very successful Middletown days down in Middletown. We had the parade, we had the Jim Canna. They split it out into two. There's also going to be a junior Jim Canna happening this weekend, so if you're looking for something to do on Saturday and Sunday down in Middletown, they'll be having some great junior rodeo events for the youth down there. The other thing I'd just like to report, we had our Risk Reduction Authority meeting yesterday, myself and Jessica with the assistance obviously of Admin and Carol's office, but we took a large step forward. We're going to be bringing a recommendation of an agreement with NCO to be coordinator that is really going to help us springboard the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority to where it needs to be. In that agreement also, it also is going to be supporting the Lake County Coed. We're still working through that process, but really be a great community collaboration effort from the JPA down. So we're excited. That'll be coming to the board in the future, so we're happy for that. That'll give us the boots on the ground to communicate with all county departments, community agencies, everybody that is dealing with all risk. And obviously, we know fire season is right at our door right now, but also, we have drought, we have earthquake, we have everything else that we need to be looking at, and this is a great forum. So we're building that capacity, and we'll be implementing some of the CMAT recommendations as we move forward. So exciting, you know, to see the growth. And I really want to thank Admin and Carol's office to help supporting us to get to this point, and now we'll be kind of handing that off to NCO and all the participants as we move forward. So I'm excited about that. As we move through the rest of the week, tomorrow have, did have a meeting this morning, Community Development, a quick meeting this morning with Carol and Jessica and others. You know, we're going to continue focusing on that as the committee, as we've been appointed, because we know how important that transition and, you know, the whole process is right now that we're going through for community development. So tomorrow have the Economic Development Task Force meeting that will be happening. On Thursday, have a couple different meetings, the Rural Counties, ESJPA. I am the appointee, and Lars is the alternate. Lars usually attends those meetings, and he will be doing that tomorrow. Also have some North Coast EMS meetings going on at the same time, so we'll definitely be taking advantage of Lars being able to go to the ESJPA. On Friday, have the EOC drought meeting. And for the next couple of weeks, we don't have board supervisor meetings, so we'll go through those. And I think there are going to be some folks traveling, so have on my calendar on Monday, the 28th, for a meeting with Carol, but I'll work that out if that's going to happen or not. And then Wednesday, the 30th, I have on the calendar for Group Insurance Committee meeting. We have met for a while, but we'll be going back for that. And then going into the holiday, the same thing. Schedule's kind of open at this point to be back on July 13, and I know we're going to have a full, busy schedule there. So we'll be kind of holding down the fort, it sounds like, too. There's going to be a lot of traveling happening by some of the supervisors, so not going anywhere. We'll be here, and that's about it.
Thank you very much. Let's go in the opposite direction and go to Supervisor Pyska.
So yes, we're very excited about the outcome yesterday at our Risk Reduction Authority meeting. We've been working on this for months, so, you know, now we finally have staff capacity starting July 1 for both the Risk Reduction Authority and the Lake County Coed. So that's very exciting. That's one of the goals that we had set early on this year, is to get that person in place before fire season started. We didn't know fire season was going to start this early, but they are in place. And that, the managing person is Tammy Alexey, who a lot of you already know through NCO. She's very familiar with everything going on in Lake County that's disaster-related, so she was a natural fit. So, you know, in case you don't understand, the, you know, the function of a coed in a disaster is the coed director is in the EOC and has a direct line of communication and then sends, then activates the coed and activates the surrounding coeds and reaches out for resources. So I remember a time when you and you and I all met at the Moose Lodge with masks and hand sanitizer and all, you know. That was great of us, but the coed director will be, you know, managing how resources will be, you know, managing how resources move around and to really care for everybody that's going through a disaster and then through the recovery. So this is a huge step forward. The coed steering committee's been working hard on this for many, many years. So to have this director in place is really helpful, and they're having their meeting today. Supervisor Simon and I had a Workforce Alliance meeting on Friday, and then afterwards, we had a labor strategy meeting with some of our counterparts in Napa and the mayor of Calistoga to talk about the hospitality shortage in labor and, you know, how we can really collaborate, work together, and take a regional approach to these labor shortages. So that was the beginning of many conversations to come, to kind of really build this coalition. So that was exciting. Last week was also the opioid summit where Supervisor Scott and I participated, and it was an all-day event. It was just so amazing to see how many people are really focused and dedicated on curbing addiction in our county and having the opportunity to share out and discuss, and then hear just some really amazing motivating stories. So those are my reports. Hawbury Council had a meeting last week also. They are moving, again, moving forward with their Blackberry Cobbler Festival. Lots of work on the bylaws and kind of a little bit of reorganization happening there. So that's very, very good to see that all of that happening. I am going to be spending time with my family, but there's a few things that I would like to call your attention to. And Thursday, there is a governing board meeting for Area Agency on Aging, and Carol's going to be attending for me. And I've asked them to put on their agenda a discussion topic of supporting the senior centers to try and get open, because we don't have cooling centers, as was mentioned earlier. We don't have resources for our seniors who have been cooped up for more than a year now. The majority of them seem to be vaccinated, and we rely on these senior centers to offer support and resources to our vulnerable population in the summer when it's hot, when we have disasters. And so I'm hoping that that conversation will lead two ways to support the reopening of those senior centers. And if anyone is in town on Thursday evening, the Side Market in Kelseyville, the Side Street Market in Kelseyville is a wonderful little event that was started last month. It's going to run on the last Thursday of every month through the, into the fall. And it's just a great event with lots of artisans, food vendors. It's very small, but very sweet. So I encourage anybody who has free time Thursday evening to check that out. And I won't really see too much more on my calendar, and I'll be coming back to our next meeting.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. Let me see. There we go. All right. So I'll start out with, last week, we did our first Community Visioning Planning Forum. That went really well, and I think we're having another one coming on. I think it's, did we set that already on the 29th, for the 29th evening?
I'll have to look for the date, but we did set it.
We set it for two weeks, but we were worried we don't want to conflict with any cities or any other agendas. So I know that, I know we said two weeks for sure. So we'll be meeting again, probably next week sometime.
Matthew, can you remind us of the date we set for the next Community Visioning Planning Forum?
The date we set was June 29.
June 29, okay. And it's not on our calendars yet, but it's coming. So yeah, thank you. Good memory.
For once, it worked. So the next thing I did Wednesday is Supervisor Sabatier, myself, Marina Delgianis, and Deputy Director Delgianis and Director Scott DeLeone met with the leadership at Robinson Rancheria to discuss the Middle Creek Restoration Project. They have a new leadership, so we wanted to get on the same page with them and talk about the intricacies of the committee, the project, and where we're going from there. And it went pretty well. Hopefully, we can--
Went really well.
Yeah. So we're hoping that we can get a better communication flow going there. And unfortunately, at times, different governments have different elections and get new officials, and you got to get them up to par. So that's kind of what went on there. I had to stop because I was on my way to Mono County. Thanks to Sheriff Martin, I was calling it Mono County because I was, he says, "You should know better. It's Mono County." All right. So on my way up, I stopped at Strawberry, had that discussion on Zoom. And what I really appreciated about this trip was, of course, it's a RCRC meeting, the first one we had in two years. And for full disclosure, RCRC pays for my travel, so it's not, doesn't cost the county anything whenever I go to that committee meeting. Supervisor Sabatier is also on that committee as well. But what I appreciated is I was able to conduct a portion of my Worth meeting, because Mono County has really big mountains, and so their Verizon Towers and whatnot were working really well. I was able to log in and be a part of the Worth Committee briefly. They had Melinda Rivera from the PSPS giving an actual presentation. Also, Sheriff Martin was there as well, and I know that they were pretty excited about that meeting. It went well. Anyhow, next was the RCRC meeting, and it was really, it was a really good event to have amongst everybody for once. For the last two years, we were all on Zoom. There's a lot of new people that were elected during the SLAC election to be a part of this program as well. And what RCRC does is they're conglomerate of rural counties that, in essence, you know, discuss issues that affect the rural counties. We all have very similar situations. I like going there to discuss the problems, especially with our, you know, with, you know, our wildfire issues. That's always something that comes up in discussions. But also, I'm trying to also get in contact with other supervisors that have dealt with some of the issues that we're struggling with that they may have, because they're either smaller or similar to us. So I go for that as well. Secretary Crowfoot was there from the Natural Resources Department for California, and we were able to discuss a couple of things that went on about the drought, water, water resources, things of that nature. I also was able to talk with him briefly about the Middle Creek Restoration Project. I wanted to get some insight onto that. So a future discussion with him will be coming soon on that. Of course, there's all sorts of other supervisors there trying to paw at him, too, and get his attention on their issues. So, but I at least got a card and got to talk with him about it and ready to follow up with that, and asked him to tune into the Blue Ribbon Committee or someone in his staff to tune into that as well. And then Friday, so Thursday, we conducted that meeting, and then we also went on a tour. Was really excited to see how other counties do business, especially one similar to ours, being very small. Friday, we conducted the Golden State Finance Association, and broadband was a big discussion. I know Supervisor Sabatier had gotten us in contact with conducting broadband, working on that right now. And so that was discussed. And then, let's see, I'll go to my calendars. I also met with the Lucerne Alpine Senior Center yesterday, because I have that meeting Thursday with the Governing Board Agency on Aging. And just, they're looking for a new director. I guess they lost their last director. So they're, they want to open to the public, like you discussed, Supervisor Pyska, but also want to find that person first before they start making changes. They also are looking to put their building into a situation to be ADA compliant, and they have a lot of different things to fix as well. So they're looking into that type of thing right now. But so tomorrow, I have a Blue Ribbon Committee, which I mentioned earlier. Thursday, the Area Agency on Aging at 1:30, and then I have a Clear Lake Oaks-Glenhaven Business Association meeting Thursday evening at 5:30. I will be conducting my phone call or my meeting. I'm not sure exactly which one it is yet, but I just know it's a meeting with the, for Community Development, for the actual gentleman that we contracted with. David, yes. Yes, David, sorry. All right, let's see. And then I'll be here. I'm not necessarily going anywhere, so I'll be holding the fort down too while others are gone. I know on the 7th, because we won't be meeting, of course, during the 4th of July holiday, I'll be, the Earth meeting is at 4:00 on the 7th, 4:00 PM on the 7th at the Fire Department. And then, of course, I attend the CSA meeting. And then I think Middle Creek Restoration is on the 12th at 10:30, and then I'll have a meeting with Carol and be back here on the 13th for a robust meeting here.
Supervisor Scott?
Thank you. I would just like to add the first Vision Forum, the Visioning Formation Planning Committee, it was quite inspiring, I'm having a hard time talking today, discussion, and a very safe space for people to open up. And this committee fully understands that when we do have the forum, it's going to be difficult. It's not going to be an easy discussion, but it's going to be a discussion that we need to have, and it's definitely going to be moving us forward. So I'm excited for the continuation of that and look forward to when we set dates for that. I don't have much on my calendar, because I will also be leaving to spend time with family. On the 8th, there's going to be EMS meeting at 8:00 AM via Zoom, and then a Hope Rising Executive Committee meeting on the 12th at 8:30. That's also on Zoom. And then just back here on the 13th.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't have much that hasn't already been talked about. Took a part in Robinson Rancheria's discussion. It was good to be with that group, with their council, and to try to get them up to speed and garner some support. As we had talked about, Supervisor Simon, I'd said, looking at all around the lake, that's our start, and I'm sure that will enhance that conversation about who else to reach to for support on our meeting in July with the Middle Creek Restoration. Did meet with Etheric Communications again to discuss their $8 million that they received from the feds. Unfortunately, they probably will not be able to move forward with anything, construction plans, design plans, until possibly, we said, late August. But we are looking to make sure to get things done, and they stated that it might take them two to three years to be able to spend down all that funding in order to enhance and deploy greater access to broadband. And they're not the only group that we're going to be working with, but they are one of the three. And of course, we have some local ones, but they are the ones who receive the RDOF. I'm not going to tell you what that actually stands for, because I don't know. Rural Development something, Opportunity Financing?
Financing.
Something like that. Okay. I was close. So they received that directly from the feds, and they're going to be spending it right here. That's why we're discussing those three. Broadband is obviously not limited to just those three. But going back, my calendar is very wide open. I do have something tomorrow. I'm looking at CAO Hutchinson. Do we have the EDTF tomorrow?
Looking at, yes, actually, we were talking about postponing, but we have decided to have it after all.
Okay.
Are you here tomorrow?
I can call in by phone. I still have an opening at that point, so I just wanted to make sure. So I'll be joining in on that meeting. Maybe in the early in the morning, I might also join in the Lake County Blue Zone Planning Meeting. Has that been canceled? Okay. So never mind. Reneg on that. And then I will be back in time. On July 3, there will be a, the 4th of July Parade and Festivities over in the city of Clear Lake. I have been honored by being selected as the grand marshal for that parade, so I did what anybody should do, and I invited my daughter to be with me, because that will be fun and memorable. And I'm looking forward to that. I know when I went down, and Supervisor Simon was there as well for the Memorial Days Parade over in Lower Lake, it was incredible to see how much the community came out. And I'm expecting the same for the 4th of July. There will be Tyler Rich that will be doing a concert free in the park, in Austin Park. That starts at 6:00 PM, and then around 9:30, 10:30, whenever the sun is completely down and it's dark enough, there will be fireworks. Just want to remind everybody that this is the time to be as safe as possible. There will be some fireworks or firecrackers still sold, I believe, in the city of Lakeport. Please do them responsibly, no matter where it is that you buy them. Just, please do them responsibly. We're already seeing effects of dry grass and dry fuel. We want to make sure to be able to still enjoy the holidays, but not have to create any unfortunate circumstances. Other than that, coming back, there is that meeting that was already discussed about on the 8th with our EMS. As you saw today in the consent agenda, I added myself, thank you to Supervisor Pyska for allowing me to make the change. I added myself to the EMCC Committee. I've been having discussions with Adventist Health where we are, we need to really put an eye on what's happening with our, what's called IFTs, which is interfacility transfers. It's becoming more and more difficult, and we need to resolve that, and we need to figure out what steps we need to take. It's been worked on for a long time. I believe some things have been solved, but unfortunately, the problem still persists, and we need to, we need to take some greater steps. Then there's the Roadmap Task Force meeting on Friday, the 9th. And then the following week, probably don't have much other than, I don't see Middle Creek Restoration on the 12th.
Because it's on the 5th. They didn't move it yet.
Okay. So it will be moved from the 5th to the 12th. So Middle Creek Restoration meeting with our CAO, continuing my CSAT calls on Mondays, and then back here for the 13th, as somebody's already said, with a very robust meeting, as we all anticipate after two weeks of time off. So that will do it for--
We have the Ag Committee meeting, I forgot to mention, on the 6th. Do you have that on your calendar? We talked about that 11 o'clock on the 6th.
Yes. Thank you for reminding me. 11 o'clock?
I believe so.
Okay. Yeah, if you could send me some, I put it on my calendar, but if you could send me the, how I link in and things like that, that would be great. And CAO Hutchinson, you had something to add?
Yeah, just a small FYI on July 12th. That is the day the panel will interview public health officer candidates, and I am seated on that panel, and I'm hoping it takes all day, because I'm hoping we have a large candidate pool. So I will miss my meetings with you that day, and I'll stay in communication with you via email and keep you abreast of anything you need to know. And then your board will follow with the finalists interviews on the 13th.
Well, that's an interesting voicemail. So we are going to go ahead and finish up this item for our calendars. That was interesting. And we are going to go into closed session, and our closed session is regarding four items. 8.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1, Center for Biological Diversity versus County of Lake Ita. 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1, California Native Plant Society versus County of Lake Ita. 8.3, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2, E1, one potential case. And 8.4, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1, City of Clear Lake versus County of Lake Ita. And with that--
Excuse me, you have one more.
Yeah, and I forgot. I had to scroll a little further, but thank you. 8.5, sitting as the Board of Directors of the Lake County IHSS Public Authority Conference with A, Chief Negotiator M. Long, and County Negotiator C. Marketan, and B, Employee Organization, California United Home Care Worker Union Local 4034. And with that, we will adjourn to closed session and take a five-minute break before we get started.
Bruno, did you say that you're pulling?
Okay.
8.5?
Check, check, check. I got the gong. So we will be pulling item point 5 and bringing that back at a future agenda. Yes. All right. And with that, five-minute break, and we will see each other here in the room. I'm looking at CAO Hutchinson. So yeah, five-minute break, then we will meet closed session here in the room.